Good evening. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2018. We are here tonight for our scheduled board workshop and our topic tonight is the proposed capital project. If we could start, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone for attending this evening. We do have a very important topic, and that is our proposed capital project. Carl, do you want to just give a little background as to where we are as of today?
Sure, sure. I've sent out a few communications to our community summarizing where we are, but let me go back to December 5th. As most of the audience, I'm sure, knows, we had a proposal for a capital project that was about $20,500,000. That project in scope covered everything from a second addition on Cottle, which included eight classrooms, renovations of both libraries, in the elementary school, at the secondary school, full renovations of both cafeterias at the elementary and the secondary schools, security upgrades, as well as a replacement athletic field. Our turf field is near end of life, and as well as a full renovation of the Cottle playfield. In addition to all of that, we had a number of infrastructure needs in both buildings that would have been addressed through that one proposal. As most people know, that proposal was defeated. It was a very close vote, but it did go down, and the board and I, at that point, really had to consider what to do next. We listened to many, many people, and I want to say thank you. I even see some people in this audience this evening who gave us some very, very valuable feedback, some in the form of emails, some in the form of informal discussions, and then also a group of parents, you know, from our community, I know, organized an online petition, which was also very helpful, and it was a group of people who signed requesting that the board and the district reconsider sending out the same proposal for a public vote at some point in the future. Considering everything, and then going back to the drawing tables, sitting with the administration, sitting with our architects, what we believe is that people, in general, I think, looked at the plan as something very positive, something very responsible. The one negative criticism we received was that it was too expensive. We did hear that repeatedly. We did about 14 or 15 community presentations. In some of those presentations, we had an audience of five people, and other times we had an audience of 50 people. But we really got out there to try to meet with every constituent in the community. We did our best to communicate the plan and why we thought it was important for our schools and the future of Tuckahoe. But we did hear a lot of feedback just about the price. Also, there's been some tax reform that was announced right before that December 5th vote. I know there was some concern over that, what did it mean for the homeowner and the taxpayer in our community. So we listened, and listened very carefully. And at this point, what the board and I decided to do was to scale back that proposal. And we tried to thoughtfully list, and we had a list, an itemized list, of all the things we wanted to accomplish, but we really thought carefully about what are the most essential needs for our school district. And that gave us some clarity. Top of the list, and I think most people understand this, is classroom space at the elementary school. If you go down there, many of you are parents of elementary children, the building is overcrowded. There is no question about that. We have no art room right now. The art teacher travels on a cart. The program has been compromised. The music teacher is in a room that is not the correct size, not the correct shape. She makes the most of it, but it has compromised our wonderful music program. We have many small classes for E&amp;L students, for special education students, that are in inadequate spaces. You know, there's one classroom, small instructional room, that is in the former gym locker room. So it really is very much a gym locker room. We did our best to make it suitable, but no matter what, there is this noise factor. You are right, adjacent to a gymnasium, whistles, the cheers, it's not conducive to learning. So we, at this point in time, believe that it's not an enhancement, it's not a nice-to-have, but those eight classrooms that we're proposing is essential. And I would also say to people, and I've said this, you know, informally, but I'm going to say it public, I would challenge anyone in our community to find an elementary school that doesn't have a library, does not have an art room, does not have a music room, because -- and I add "library" to the list, because in September, there is the possibility, depending on how many kindergarten sections we have, that we may need to collapse the library and turn it into a general education classroom. So as far as I'm concerned, this is unacceptable. We need to do something about it. In addition, talking about needs, we began our process talking about security as enhancement. Now, at this point in time, I think we all agree, the board and the district, that we have security needs. One of those things, and you will see in a moment, is a new entryway at Cottle, a more secure entrance, a place where visitors could be checked in before they get into the building, before they have access to students and staff. Other security upgrades are included in the project, and then there is the infrastructure piece, and I won't get into all the details of that, because it'll be presented this evening, but we have a beautiful building, but it was built in 1930. And there are some things that are original to this middle high school building that need to be addressed. And we believe that the smartest way to address those infrastructure needs are through a capital project, because of course, in doing it this way, we can access 24% in state aid, also take advantage of very low interest rates. So with that, the Board of Education and I are here this evening. You know, we've gone through this presentation, but, you know, in some ways, we're really doing this for the public. We want our public to be informed. There'll be a design portion, a timeline portion of a presentation, and then at the end, Ms. Lee Liu, our business official, will get into all the financials and the impact to the taxpayer and the homeowner in Tuckahoe. If all goes well, and if the board decides to move forward, a week from tonight, on February 12th, at our public meeting, we will approve a second bond referendum vote, and that will take place on April 10th. And the reason why we are moving so quickly, and this is probably the most important point, is we heard from our architects, who contacted State Education Department, if we move quickly, and if this is approved, then we could expedite and fast-track the approval process with state ed. We can give this an emergency status, and therefore, state ed would expedite the approval process, and we think there's a very strong likelihood that in the summer of 2019, we could start construction and get that extra space that we so desperately need. So with that intro, I think it's better to see some of what I'm describing with all the visuals. I'm going to invite from KG&amp;D, our architect, Russ Davidson. Maybe the board wants to take some seats where we have a better view.
As Carl mentioned, this is really a scaled-back version, so there's really nothing new here. It's just a portion of what was there. So we're talking about this second-story addition to Cottle. It's shown on the left. There will be some new footprint. They're shown in blue. We have two new stair towers and an elevator. On the far right side of the building, you see a small security vestibule addition. What that'll allow us to do is move the security guard out front, so that nobody can walk in the building until you've been vetted by the security person. Right now, if you go in, that happens right opposite a classroom door, so you're already in the building. So it's a seven or eight classroom addition. It's got a small group space. It's very clean, toilet rooms, elevator and stairs, new turf field at the middle school and high school, so this is replacing the carpet, basically. Renovating the existing softball field, it's going to remain a grass field down at Cottle Elementary. So that's the exterior rendering of the new addition. You can see the second floor there is in white, nice generous windows. Classrooms will be bright, south-facing and north-facing. It includes all furniture. It'll be nice, up-to-date, full-size classrooms. And this is just an image of a science lab for fifth grade, and again, nice and bright. And we haven't decided that it's green or not, but we just had to put some color in there. But the project budgets are complete with furniture, so it's really 100% done. So that's just a rendering of the updated field, and you can see the new security vestibule at Cottle on the right, and way up on the left, you can see that second-story addition. So obviously, the cafeteria and library part and gymnasium have been taken out of this Here's a summary of the work at Cottle. We are going to do some security work on the other entrance as well, but that won't be a building addition. That'll just be sort of door hardening. And then the playing field upgrades, so it's about 7.8 at Cottle, and the middle school, high school turf replacement, and the district-wide infrastructure that was mentioned, and some interior and exterior door security here at the high school, for a total proposal of just under $10 million. So this is the proposed schedule. One of the things that's really critical about time is, when you're building a second-story addition, you cannot erect steel over an occupied building. Kind of makes sense. We only have the summer to do it. If it goes any further out, we miss a whole year. So that's one of the really big thinking about the classrooms now, is that if we do the classrooms now, we start design pretty much immediately, we feel very comfortable that we can be erecting steel in July and August of 2019. That's what this is all about, is getting to steel erection in 2019. We've actually allowed 36 weeks for SED permitting. But as Carlo alluded to, we called SED and we said, "What if you're not going to do it?" And they said, "No, we'll do it. If it's steel in the summer, and that's the only time you can do it, when we're not responsive, come up here and we'll get you approved for steel in the summer." So that's as solid an answer as you'll ever get out of the state, and I've had lots of not-so-solid answers out of the state in my career, but we feel really good about this. So that's the referendum date, and we would start design right away. And then I know a lot of people are very interested in the other parts of the earlier project, and I don't think anyone's decided that they're gone forever, but this is sort of the must-have, and this allows us to get steel erected in July of 2019 and start to deal with that overcrowding problem. And then it's probably going to finish around January. I don't know if you'll move in in January, but construction will continue during the year above the heads, but the steel and the building shell, it'll be watertight, and there'll be concrete poured, so it should be quiet. There are rules about dust and noise during construction that'll all be obeyed. So if there's some noisy activity that needs to happen, that'll have to be after hours or on a weekend. The kids will absolutely have a good learning environment and be safe. So that's the visuals. So this is what we're talking about, is...
What's the infrastructure?
There's a fairly long list. It's the priorities one and two of infrastructure that come from a building condition survey. It's capital repair-type stuff, and we're going to look at that carefully. It was in the earlier proposals, and I believe we're also going to be looking at an energy performance contract to try and do some work, and Lee has a little bit more detail on the infrastructure later.
Have there been any changes to the front entrance and the classrooms, or that's exactly what was in the previous proposal?
It's exactly what was in the previous proposal. We just took the gym out, the cafeteria, and the library.
And then what changes here? The library here was on there, correct?
It's not in this proposal.
Will we ask questions? Because at home, we're not going to be able to hear you. Some people are going to want to know. So should we just ask questions now, or...
Russ needs to leave, so if you have questions...
Yeah. So the question was, you know, is the high school, middle school, high school library in this proposal? And the answer is no. It is not in this proposal. This was, I think the board's thinking was, this is the absolute must-haves, and we need to get to erecting steel in the summer of, next summer, and this is the way to do that. It doesn't mean that anything is off the table permanently. More to discuss there.
Do you want to speak, or Michelle?
Okay, sure. Sure.
Lee, you want your presentation?
Sure.
And I would just recommend, we do have a financial presentation for you, so maybe, you know, this first round of questions will only be on design or the timeframe that Russ presented to us. So, Michelle, I'll turn it over to you, if you'd like to facilitate.
So anyone who has a question for the architect on the design and what's just been presented, and I'm sorry, the only reason why I'm doing it this way is so that everyone at home's able to, I'm sure many at home also have the same questions, similar questions. So if anyone wants to come forward with questions for the architect?
That's Sylvester, Gifford Street. I guess this falls into that realm, but I think it's the elephant in the room. If any of us know what's going on with the recess situation at Cottle, and the lack of recess and the lack of movement, and the fact that the gym space is not in here is so disappointing, because movement, I mean, any study will tell you, movement and learning go hand-in-hand. And so I know that, I don't know if it's for you or you, however, it's extremely disappointing. And the recess situation is horrific right now.
Okay. Russ, could you just explain, when we had the discussion about if we were to add items on to what we're proposing, how would the state then give us the timeframe back? So if we were to add, let's just say, if we were to add a gym at this point, if we were to add the library, then is it fair to say they would no longer consider it to be an emergency?
It's a lot harder to make that case, because that work can happen at any time, really. By isolating just the classroom addition, and because you have this safety limitation when steel can be erected...
And unfortunately, that is our motivation at this point. So we're working with the time, because we don't want to wait another year for classroom space. Doesn't mean that any of these items are gone forever, but what we're saying is, at this point, we want to get started right away with additional classrooms. And if this is the way we can get construction 2019, then that's how we have to move forward. I'm not sure what else we could do at this point, but...
On that note, I can appreciate the sense of urgency in trying to move quickly. My question is, will there be a phase two at some point that addresses all of the other deficits? Because they're not going away, right? My son has the same issue of, there is no recess. It's been cold out, they can't go outside. My son doesn't even have time to finish his lunch, because they're rotating people through the cafeteria so quickly. So, I mean, you all put the first bond up for a reason. I would love to see some commitment that these things will not be gone permanently, that they will be addressed, and that there is a plan to do so. So I'd love your feedback on that.
I think maybe when Lee gives us, when we go over the financials and how we're going to pay for this, and then maybe we can see when we think that that could be possible. Like, let's, you know, I agree with you. You know how the board feels. We are in favor of the original project, but we're in fear of not getting what we need.
Yeah.
And, you know, you never want to act in fear, but at this point, we can't give up that window of opportunity to construct in 2019 and lose another year of classrooms.
Yeah.
So what kind of what we're seeing, it is two separate things. Let's deal with the urgencies right now, and kind of firm that up, and get that piece of it done, and then we'll discuss exactly what you're presenting to us.
Yeah. And I will say, for the record, I think if you did put the original bond up for revote, I think the community is awake right now. I think many people just assumed it would pass, but I think if you put the same exact vote up, it would pass this time around, because, again, the margin was so slim, and I really believe, unfortunately, it came to this, I think if you put the same vote up, it would pass.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks.
Quick question, and I apologize if this was discussed at a previous meeting, but what's proposed in this capital project with the eight classrooms? How does that trickle down? Because that's fourth and fifth grade? Is that what's going up there? I'm not exactly sure how...
No, it's the location, but it's not specifically fourth and fifth grade, correct?
Okay. So I'm just wondering how it trickles down, you know, would it bring the library back? Would it, you know, make class sizes smaller?
Good question. Thank you.
Great, great question, and I think, let me invite Russ up, because it will reinstate many important learning spaces. So Russ...
You have how many sections per grade level now?
We're either four or five.
Right. So this allows them all to get equal sections per grade level, and you'll get, you know, legitimate music and art spaces in the library back, and small group rooms will go back to appropriate spaces. So it adds rooms on one end of the building, but through sort of the musical chairs of reassignment, it cures the whole problem, K to five, and gives you a science room, which you don't have. So it is not only fixing problems, it's providing new opportunities.
Thank you, Russ.
Is universal included?
Let's get pre-K from coming back. Yes. Well, we do still have the option to pursue a grant for pre-K. We had a half-day program. There is a grant for a full-day program, and once we establish all the instructional spaces, we would absolutely pursue that once again.
Lori Gerald. I had a question, and I know we talked about this before with the original, but maybe you could, maybe I missed this part, maybe if you could talk about that a little bit. These babies are going to leave K to five at some point, and they're going to make their way up. And so what I wanted to know was, how will, how will the shift of the population of students from four to five, since it's growing and big? My son says, "Mom, middle school is so, so many kids now, middle school." I'm like, "Okay, Jada." But it's a whole lot of, way more than us. So my thought was, my question is, how does that work for the middle school and high school? Because they're all in one building, so then are we now going to have a whole big overcrowding situation at here, at this school?
That's a great question, Ms. Gerald. And again, I'll invite Russ back up, because he did a full, complete analysis of every school in the district, and there is some room to accommodate an increased enrollment at the middle high school, and Russ can explain.
Yeah, you have capacity at the middle school, high school. If you don't build the Cottle addition, though, you might have to move the fifth grade up here, and that would create a problem at the middle school and high school, and you'd still have kind of a problem at Cottle. But right now, we've met and gone over the room utilization for the middle school and high school. You have relatively low room utilization, so you have a little room to grow, and your last major capital project did provide additional space in this building, and that still looks to be holding solid.
Rhea Beach, three Lucille, please. So my question is, again, I'm going to go back to, that's the outside. What would a new classroom, an existing classroom, look like inside? Would there be any work done to the existing classrooms to update them and modify them and modernize them?
I think, Lee, in the infrastructure, that would be part of the infrastructure update, so do you want to address that?
Want me to address it now?
And I think it's something we can address, we could talk about, but I think the community needs to see what an existing classroom looks like, the condition that it's in, and what changes will be made firsthand. I think that's very important, because again, to have the bells and whistles in certain spots, and not to walk through the entire building with a feel of an upgraded sense would do a disservice.
We have in the budget right now, we've included in monies for infrastructure. However, it's not going to be a complete and thorough renovation of the entire building. We do have monies for Cottle set aside for ceiling and floor replacements, door replacements, tile replacements where needed, and we're looking to see what other things we can accomplish through our regular budget as we go through from year to year. But from this project itself, and I'll go through in more detail, what we're mostly focusing on are the main infrastructure needs for the district, and any other issues that we might be facing in the district that need to be addressed immediately.
In addition, I know Lee is exploring a potential energy performance contract. Russ, I know you've been involved with them also, and can you just kind of give the audience an idea of what that...
Yeah, so we identify with our engineering team possible projects that would result in energy savings, and some of those, the biggest would be, for example, an LED lighting conversion, and that's quite likely that a company will come in and change out all your LED lights. So that can have a significant impact on how spaces feel, and boilers and energy controls and things like that. Energy performance contracting is a financing method where the company takes your energy savings and pays itself back for the improvements that it does for you for a period of time, and then after that period of time, the district gets the energy savings. But by that method, there's no capital outlet or tax impact for any of those improvements. It's a financing method, you know, it's not a grant.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay, Lee, did you want to go on with the financials?
Sure. Can you, I think we can see. Can you see? If I see you, you can see right here. Okay, so this is really an update of the presentations I've done in the past, and I'll just go through a little background, and then I'll go into what the current numbers look like and the impact that it might have. The Tuckahoe community, we're looking at this year, we have a $32.5 million budget. The last four years, you can see what our tax levy increases were. We're living in a tax cap environment, and those tax caps are limited by the New York State and the formulas that they give us each year to figure out our tax cap. It's a misnomer when they say 2%. We have a formula based on CPI and brick-and-mortar growth in the district, as well as some exclusions for various things that they tell us. We fill out the formula, and that's what we've done the last four years. On average, for the four years, we've had a 1.07% tax levy increase to the residents of the district. We've been managing the increases that we see in our school district, my predecessors, as well as currently, by trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible and run a balanced budget, which we're also required to do by state law. As you break down the district, we have 1,281 single-family homes, and the total assessed value for all the taxable property in the district is $18.7 million. So the median, or the typical assessed value home in Tuckahoe, means half the homes are assessed higher, half are lower, is $8,500, and that's just a formula, the way they come up with your assessed value. We're not at actual market value assessment, it's just an assessed value that the town or the state comes up with. So you, if you're not sure what your assessed value is on your own home, you can call the town assessor at the town of Eastchester, and he will provide you, or she, or whoever is in the office at the time, can provide you with your assessed value for your own home. So if we work with the median house in the district, that's our tax rate, and if you multiply that per $1,000 of assessed value, so a median home would have $8.5,000 worth of assessed value, multiply that by our tax rate, and you'll come up with the median tax bill in Tuckahoe, which is about $12,300 per year. And that's just school taxes. That doesn't include county taxes or any other taxes. That's just your taxes for the school district. Tuckahoe financially is in very good shape. We were recently upgraded to an AA3 rating by Moody's Investor Service. We were recently upgraded to an AA3 rating by Moody's Investor Service. And also in terms of borrowing right now, although to date, interest rates have been at historical lows, we are seeing an uptick in the bond market. But I've been working, and as I'll show you going forward, I've been working with our capital market advisors and we are factoring in that interest rates are starting to tick up at this point in time. So the numbers we're looking at have a higher interest rate than we were looking at a few months ago. And the reason we bond to do a capital project is because we just don't have the capacity in a school budget to spend $9 million. We can't tax for that next year. It would just be too overwhelming for a community. And all school districts around the country and certainly around New York State issue bonds to finance large capital project improvements. That allows the taxpayers to vote directly on a project. We submit it to the state the same way and we get to maximize our state building aid, which is a formula-driven, completely incomprehensible formula that the state provides us. And right now, the Tuckahoe District's state aid ratio is 23.8%. School districts may only borrow the amount of funds that are authorized in a vote. So if we authorize and send to the voters a referendum for a certain amount of money and we find we don't need as much money, we can't, or we need more money, we, we can spend less, but we cannot spend more. And if we don't spend it all, we would return it to the taxpayer. So what does it look like? For a $9,950,000 project, the annual cost of debt would be $680,000. And that's the principal and the interest that we would repay over 20 years. And I've increased the amount of time that we would repay it because the average ratio of what we're proposing to do could be financed over 20 years. The previous project, I was shortening that repayment period to 16 years because we had a lot of renovations that were not allowed to amortize over 20 years. Based on the type of project work we're doing, the state also has a formula of what's allowed to have state aid. Not everything gets state aid. Incidental costs don't get state aid. If you, certain types of projects get, don't get state aid. But based on what we are proposing and we had our capital market analysts take a look at the entire project just to confirm, we're looking that we would get about $120,000 a year in state aid over the cost of, over the life of the project on average. It varies a little toward the end. And the net annual cost of the new debt after the aid would be $560,000 a year. So going through another formula that you can take a look at what would that mean to the homeowner? If you had an average assessed value of $8,500, your annual cost over the 20 years would be $254. And that's significantly lower, obviously, than the last bond, which was over 20 million. And if you wanted to take a look at what it would cost for your own home, just take how many thousands of assessed val, take your assessed value and multiply it by that project cost factor, which will be on the website tomorrow, and you'll be able to project what it would cost your home on an annual basis. We'll also have the tax cap calculator revised and put back on the website. So you can just plug in your assessed value and you can just generate what it would cost you as a homeowner. Now, there's one more way to take a look at what that means to a homeowner. And if you can see that, the numbers in blue, as we go across the graph, are what we currently pay in principal and interest in the district for all the debt that we currently have. And as you can see, that blue bar trends downward over the next 10 years or so. And the red on top is the new debt that we would take on, on this project. And as you can see, by the time we get to year three of red, we're pretty much looking at the same cost for principal and interest as we're currently paying right now. So the first two years, there's a slight increase, a slight uptick in what we would pay in principal and interest, which would not really be a significant individual cost, I wouldn't think. I haven't calculated that out, but I will, and I'll provide that for you. But by year three of repaying the project, which is in year 22, 23, we'll really be paying slightly less than we currently pay now. So I think that in terms of the cost of the project and its impact on the district, because it's been so significantly lowered and we are starting to shed debt as we go forward in the years, it will almost come to a neutral category as we go forward. And as you can see, by 28, 29, the third floor, the wing, the high school, middle school wing, that debt drops off and it goes down to almost zero. So by 28, 29, we're in a position where all debt is virtually zero. And then that does provide the district with some room in terms of new projects down the road for things that may arise at that point in time. Again, these are the next steps based on the same timeline that Russ discussed before. If we're looking at a referendum in April, these are the steps we have to go through to get the project done. And I know the question came up on infrastructure, so I'll pull out my infrastructure list. Some of the things that I just wanted to let you know that we're considering doing in that million two are things that were rated high priority in our building condition survey, which is provided to the district on a five-year basis. The state requires that we do this every five years and we have engineers come in and take a look at the infrastructure of the district. And the highest priority projects that we put on the list include the telephone clocks, bells, PA systems in both schools, replacing floor tiles in both buildings, removing asbestos pipe fittings in our, in our basements and our steam pipe systems, updating floors and subfloors, refurbishing unit vents that are in many of the classrooms, replacing ceilings, rekeying door hardware, and that's also a security upgrade. We are hoping to have that perhaps wireless, all new technologies for lockdowns and security in the buildings, repaving asphalt, updating plumbing fixtures, making things ADA compliant, interior and exterior, exterior door replacements, and again, replacing the turf field and renovating the Cottle field. And that adds up to all the infrastructure projects that we're considering. So, any questions? That's later in the evening, separate presentation.
So I will just add, and Lee and Russ, thank, thank you. That infrastructure, what, one criticism, and we do listen to the feedback we get, one criticism of our presentation prior to December 5th was that we didn't elaborate enough on, on those infrastructure projects. And they are very important. Lee said, you know, a new lock system, there is new technology where from the principal's office, if you needed to be in a lockdown status, the principal literally could hit a button and lock down the entire building, interior, exterior. That technology is out there. It's not that expensive, but that is definitely the direction we need to move in. Right now at Cottle, my God, when, when we, when we end a lockdown drill with our police department and administration, our custodian has to go around with, with no less than 30 keys. We have so many different keys and locks just from over the years. So we want a uniform lock system that really, really can accomplish what, what we believe the school needs. The PA system, here in the middle, high school, we have a system that we don't even have people who know how to repair it anymore. It is so old. It's a wire system, it's, the company is Simplex. But again, there are new wireless systems and that I see as, as a huge safety feature. Because if we need to communicate in an emergency situation with all of our students and all of our staff, we need a system that is reliable. The current system is no longer reliable. We constantly have repair people coming in, we're holding it together. But I personally will do a much better job, along with Ms. Lou and, and the board, of making sure that, and those are just two that I highlighted, but there's a long list of infrastructure. It's approximately $1.2 million and they are very, very important to this district. And we will make sure that, that we communicate that effectively. Board wants to add any?
Anything, Daj or Rob?
No, just thank you for the, hopefully it's one of the final presentations. Look, I'm in the same boat. I have a son coming into kindergarten next year. I have one in first grade now, I have one in the 10th grade. And, you know, I wanted the 20 million bond to come back up so all my boys could enjoy everything, a new gym, a new library, you know, up here. But for right now, this is an emergency and come out and vote. You know, show the board, show everybody that, you know, that this is what you want as a district and, you know, we'll be there to support you.
And I, just to reiterate what, what we've said tonight, I think, listen, we're, I, obviously we all felt strongly about the 20 million dollar bond, but we felt that we cannot take the risk of coming out with another bond or that same bond and it going down and then waiting another year for the project to begin. So we found ourselves in this difficult position. Everything that was said tonight was valid. Recession, classrooms. It's, it's just really difficult and I wish the petition would have had 1,500 votes and then maybe we would have felt differently about putting out the same bond. And I don't even know if the petition was a valid enough reason to come out with the same bond, although it was definitely got everybody awake. So we've thought about all these things and we just feel we absolutely have to do this now. And if this goes well, then maybe we could discuss coming up with a second plan in a year or two when the debt looks a little differently and, and we can get your support then and we could plan it out properly. So hopefully everyone's awake and we're gonna get the support we need to get this done. And then once this is done, we can move on and try and do some of those other things that we also feel are necessary, but maybe not as urgent as the classroom issued down at Cottle.
And if I could just add to that, I mean, there's a lot of talk and I think Russ could add to this. And if you look at all the, all the districts, our neighboring districts, Bronxville, Blindbrook just passed a bond recently, and everyone is talking about trying to be creative with the debt and the finances. There's this term debt neutral and really other districts, even a district like Bronxville which is proposing a 20 million dollar project, is debt neutral. There will be no increase in their taxes. And so what does that say? What is that message? That really they even think that their community may not support additional taxes. So I don't think it's a unique problem to us. I don't think it looks negatively on our district. I think it is just the reality of what we're dealing with right now. And when the question was asked, well, what can we do down the road? I think in that graph, where, when in a couple of years, just two short years after this project, our debt will start to fall off. We can put up another $10 million project for the same amount of money, another $250, and that would be what we were saying is debt neutral. Because we're already used to paying the 250, that 250 is gonna drop off in two or three years. And I mean, it's not really my, correct me if I'm saying something inaccurately because it's your specialty here.
Few more than two or three.
But three years, okay. But I think that is the trend. And we have to look at the reality of what's happening in our neighboring districts and in Westchester County, and this is the reality. And I don't think we should be so down on ourselves that we can't get this done. Really, there aren't many districts who can get this done. So I am confident that what we're putting forward, I think the community understands it is our need. And I think that we really need to support what we need. We are at a capacity issue at Cottle. That is just the reality. And how quickly we can get that done is what is motivating us. And I think we have to, and I think once we show the community that we can get this done, that we are willing to invest and we earn that, then two years from now, we can look at it again. And I know you're saying three years, but it'll take, you know, you gotta start talking about it a year from now. Let's be honest, you're not gonna just start talking about it in three years. We're gonna have to start planning that out for when that debt falls off. So I think we really need to look probably at, you know, three to five-year capital plan of what we need to do. I think as we discuss our budgets, starting this year and every year going forward, what part of our budget can we invest in our facilities? Can we invest in our classrooms, in carpeting, in painting, in, you know, just things that, it's not aesthetic, these are needs to update our facility? And how can we get that done within our budget, some of those things to bring, you know, the level of, of our, you know, I, I don't wanna use the word aesthetic because it's not, it's, it's things that we need in our classrooms to bring them up to that level. How can we get that done within our budget? It is a challenge, and I'm putting that on you again, Lee, it's a challenge to get it done. I sat with Rob for a couple of years on our budget committee. We talked about setting up a capital reserve account. That is probably something we should start talking about again. In the past, we have put our money into a tax cert reserve. Maybe we need to start putting money into capital reserves because we need to have a five-year, three to five-year plan of how we're gonna be improving our facility. So again, I, we are disappointed, we want it more, but we feel good about what we're putting forward because we really believe that it's, it, it suits the needs of the district right now. And if anyone else has any other questions?
Bill Carney, Middleton Place. First of all, I thank you, I know you guys have put way more time into this than you originally thought. I honestly think the plan that's submitted is way too drastic of a cut. And I know you guys are probably gonna nod your heads in agreement, but I think to cut a bond by 50% that only missed by 30 some odd votes is a mistake. And I think, I understand the urgency, but to, you know, just because, it doesn't make it the right plan just because we have to move quickly. And I think to not address the needs of the cafeteria and the libraries, I mean, if, if anybody hasn't been in this library, this reminds me of the library I was in high school in the mid 80s. I mean, these are serious needs that have to be addressed for our kids. And I know you're talking about neighboring districts and I think a lot of the neighboring districts don't have the needs that Tuckahoe, you know, current, that we currently have. So I think, you know, I know, Rob, you talked about, you know, the petition being, you know, coming into a factoring in the decision. I think relying on a social media petition might be not the best way to go. I really think, you know, I, I feel like the community has spoken out. I feel like enough people have said, put the bond up that we had originally and we'll get it passed. So I think to cut that in half is a huge mistake. And I think more importantly is, how are we gonna market this, you know, getting the vote out? Because I know last time, admittedly, there really wasn't, you know, a marketing campaign. I think a lot of people didn't realize the issues that we had. A lot of people didn't know there was art in the cart. A lot of people didn't know the potential for modular classrooms. And I don't think we, I don't think we marketed to the people who are gonna benefit the most. And I'm talking about people who don't have kids right now, or maybe have a two-year-old or have kids in daycare. I mean, my, my kid's in middle school and my other kid will be in middle school soon. I have a kid who, you know, will be in kindergarten, so it's not really gonna benefit me. It's gonna benefit the younger people in the community. So I feel like if we put up the original bond, marketed it better to the people who will benefit the most, I think it would pass. So my question is, after that long preamble, is how are we gonna market this? And is there an opportunity to not cut the bond by 50% and get some of those, you know, changes into Cottle in terms of the cafeteria and the library?
I think, so just your first question, I think, I, I hear you, right? So you value a point, right? And we didn't make our decision solely based on a social media petition. But I think what you, I mean, what's most important is, can we wait another year without changing the infrastructure down at Cottle? I don't think it's fair. So I think we have to act now. And unfortunately, because of the way the schedule works, this is how we think, and we, the, the state has said they would help us by allowing it to be an emergency status. So I think that's really the driver here. And I don't know if there's a way around it. If we were to try and add the cafeteria or add the gym or add the library, then we'd be looking at the summer after. And I don't, I don't feel that that's a risk worth taking at this point. I think it was, contrary to what you said, I think there was an awful lot done to get it out there. Could've been better, obviously it could've been better. But that also takes people paying attention. So I understand what you're saying. Maybe we could've done something different on the marketing side, but I think we have to do this because we can't afford to wait another year and miss not doing the infrastructure upgrade down at Cottle.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, but I, me personally, I could be in a minor minority. I would rather, you know, if it's gonna take an extra year, I'd rather have the right plan and have the changes done, you know, that we need done, as opposed to saying, all right, well, let's scale back down this plan and then in two or three years, maybe we'll do something extra. We're just kicking the can down the road. Like, these are problems that need to be addressed. And if it takes another year to get this done, I feel like that's what needs to be done.
Okay. And, and you, you know, you, you make, you make good points. If I could just speak to the marketing piece of it, you know, there, there was a comprehensive marketing plan. I, I think what you may recall is, and I think a lot of people have, have weighed in on this, is that the mailing, the, the one surefire way to get to every resident in Tuckahoe is, is a newsletter. And we do that for the budget every year and we certainly had that in the works for this bond. What we didn't anticipate was the level of dysfunction with our US postal system, as well as, you know, the timing of it. We probably should've been more thoughtful that it was just before the holidays, after Cyber Monday and Black Friday and all that. And... holidays, after Cyber Monday and Black Friday and all that. And bulk mail was incredibly slow. And we did a second mailer, but a lot of people said, "Too little, too late." So, we learned from our mistakes and we will be out there early with a comprehensive newsletter. The one, if, you know, and a lot of people, I think, was after the fact, so maybe didn't look at it closely, but it did speak to, you know, the issues at Cottle and the potential that a fifth grade may have to, you know, be moved to the middle high school and some of the real challenges that we're facing. It was just that it did not go as we planned. I will say, we did about 14 focus groups. As I said earlier, we had audiences of 40 or 50, and then we had audiences of four, but we presented just the same. We were out there, board members, Ms. Lou, myself. And I will say now, this time around, we will not be able to do as many. And I say to the audience and the community that, please understand, we're doing this at the same time as we are entering a budget process. So, the budget vote is in May, and we're doing both simultaneously. So, there's an awful lot. We are a small staff, so we won't be out there with as many focus groups. But again, I think the people, you know, are pretty well-educated at this point. I think the communication now has to be that we have scaled it back. We really believe these are the essential needs, and we have to outline them clearly as we started to do this evening.
Shay Scanlon-Loma, I'm Archer Drive. I'm the author of the petition. I wanted to address, we were talking about what might happen if we had a lot of votes. If you found that there was a fervor for this vote, if the $10 million passed, would there be a potential then, next year, perhaps in the fall of next year, to put another $10 million bond up?
Well, yes, I would think. But, you know, again, how would that impact us financially? So, it's hard to answer that because I don't know what the finances would be. And that's why I'm trying to be more realistic about what I'm hearing the trends are, which is to be debt neutral, budget neutral, or tax neutral, or whatever these terms are, where the, you know, we're able to get what we need and it doesn't have an effect on the taxpayer, a negative effect on the taxpayer. So, I think that is going... That's just the reality right now. And while we can say, you know, we have a motivated now parent base, we will need a motivated parent base to get this passed. I can assure you that. We will need a motivate... We will need all your signatures just to get this passed.
I guess that's my concern, is that, you know, we lost by 36 votes last time. And my concern is that people are going to say, "Fine, now we have 36 more votes, so I can stay at home tonight." Or, "This isn't that important because there are a few more people who are going to come out and vote." And my question is, if we are able to show that this vote passes overwhelmingly, does that open the door then to say that there is something else on the table? Maybe not in one year, maybe in two years.
I would say yes.
But that there is a strong base in our community that would support maybe a little bit more of an increase, such that we get closer to some of those original plans?
Right. I think the answer is that we're looking for a community that supports their schools, right? So, if the vote says that, that yes, the community is in support of what we need, that shows the message. I do think so. But I, you know, what the concern is, is that there could also be an organized vote differently. And we have to be aware of that, you know? It's just a matter of numbers, you know? The way the electric is, there's more votes outside of the school district than there are inside the school district. So, what we need is a motivated community. It can't just be about parents in the school, or parents outside the school, or senior citizens. It has to be a community that comes together, that understands that supporting your school district is a support for students and for property values. That's the message. It's twofold. It's students, children, creating a desirable learning environment which increases property values. That's the message. So, it doesn't matter if your children are in the school, outside of the school. We all want to live in a community that supports our children. That's it. So, will this show? Is this a test? Sure, it is. Yeah, it is, you know? And I don't see how anyone can argue it. I really don't. And I, you know, I understand the need for more. We, as a board, supported the need for more. But we need to be realistic, and I don't think we can take a chance on putting up a bond at this point that will fail. We have to put up something that will pass. We owe that to the kids. So, that's just...
Absolutely.
That's the truth.
I completely agree with everything you say and in support of the $20 million bond, the $10 million, excuse me, the $10 million bond as it stands today. I want to point out that a lot of people, in my family included, we lived in the city, we moved up here because of the school district, were invested in this school district. I think a lot of families, when they're determining whether or not they're going to invest in home values, which affects the home values in the community, they look at whether or not bonds pass. What happens if this fails? What are the specific things that are taken out if this fails?
I probably should take that one. I agree with you. You know, people do pay attention and do their research. And we've seen that from a lot of our families who have entered the district. One of the first things they ask for is a tour. And they seem very well-informed in my experience. If on April 10th, we establish this vote and it is not approved by the public, we need to make some really difficult decisions. And I think one that is an absolute, because I think it's the only option left, is to move our fifth-grade level up to the middle high school building. Our PPLT committee and administrators and teachers down at Cottle and parents, we're not in favor of that move because we explored it this time around. We're going to hang in there one more year at Cottle, and it's going to be very tight next year. But we're hopeful that, you know, there's a light at the end of the tunnel and that we would get a bond passed and have the space we need. But if it goes down on April 10th, it is almost guaranteed that in the following year, we would make plans to bring the fifth grade up. What it also requires, though, to do it responsibly, and of course, we would, it requires central office moving offsite. Now, that model existed about, probably about 10 years ago. And I was here in the district as a principal at the time, and I have to tell you, it was far from ideal. We were paying rent. We happened to be all the way downtown in the village of Tocco. So, we didn't have access to our central office administrators who provide enormous amount of support to the district. There was a disconnect, and no one was happy with the situation, but we were forced to do it at the time. But that decision would have... Or that model would have to be revisited, I believe, to bring the fifth grade up. Because, again, to be responsible, if you have nine-year-olds in a building where you have teenagers, 16, 17-year-olds, you would have to create almost a separate wing for grades five and six and really keep them protected and isolated, so to speak. Not in a negative way, but keep them safe. And that would require district office moving. And there's an expense attached to that. And then there's a negative impact as far as we would probably be forced to use some of our fund balance or some of our, you know, district money that our operating budget to make that happen. And I think the financial strategy would not be a good one. Right now, we have a healthy tax cert reserve. And Ms. Lou, in a few moments, will speak about the fund balance. We're ready to handle tax certiaries as they hit. We can pay them. Last year, we paid them all in cash. We did not borrow. However, if we depleted our reserves to make some of these accommodations, I could foresee, you know, in the near future, that we would be back out there bonding for tax certs, which is a very bad strategy. But you can do that legally, and we probably would be forced to do it. So, indirectly, you would be borrowing once again, but in a way where you didn't access state aid and in a way that you didn't even ask for public approval on them. Because when you take out a bond to pay a tax cert, you do not need public approval. So, I would hope that the district doesn't go back to that practice and that we continue to move forward. But that's where we would be, and we would have to do the high priority infrastructure, also with our fund balance reserves.
So, for folks that are perhaps considering voting no, we're going to need to spend the money either for the bond or for a significant outlay to move the fifth graders to the middle school. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
One way or another, we're spending money.
Absolutely. And a long-winded answer. I summed it up very nicely. And in addition, we would have to deal with all of the infrastructure needs.
And we wouldn't get the tax benefits that we would get by putting it in the bond, as opposed to putting it in a budget, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alison Halloran, the president of PTI. Just wanted to add one thing to your comment regarding moving the fifth grade up here that Russ had touched on, but we didn't mention it again. And it's a really important point. If we move the fifth grade up here, if it were to fail, there are many, many reasons why that's not a good plan. One of them is that what would happen, as you said, is the offices would have to move down to an outside space. We would spend money on that. The hallway where the offices are would then become classrooms for the fifth grade. Currently, in this building, that's our last option for expansion up here. So, we still are at a space issue. It doesn't solve the problem at all. It still creates a space issue because now you've moved fifth grade up to this building and you have nowhere to put those kids in two to three years when they have to come up here to begin their education in this building. You've taken away the space. So, moving fifth grade up here has a lot of downsides to it. But in my opinion, the biggest one is, we're spending more money and you're also taking away our last option in the middle school, high school for bigger class sizes. And then you're... We still have this issue of needing more space. And what will happen is, we'll have to bond to renovate this building rather than renovating Cottle. I mean, that's the bottom line.
It's a good point. Thank you, Alison.
Dennis Dubak, California Road. I'd just like to compliment the board and Carl for your new proposal. I think that you... Your focus is on the education of the children, predominantly, and not the nice-to-haves, but the must-haves. And I did take the walkthrough with Carl the last time, and I saw what Cottle is, and it's tight. When you've got kids in closets trying to learn, I don't think that's appropriate. So, I think that although some people are disappointed, obviously, that have children here, I've been paying taxes here for 40 years, as some other people. And we want a good school system, but we want to make sure that it's prudent and that the kids get the education that they deserve that protects everyone's real estate values. So, I'm all for this. I support it wholeheartedly. I think that you're doing what's right for the community. And there are 6,500 people in the community. And I think that's what you've got to worry about. I know a lot of people feel that, you know, yeah, we could do another vote as-is, and you think it could blow right through. I don't... I wouldn't be as optimistic as that, just knowing from talking to other people. I think the last time Carl and his team did a pretty good job of putting together some dog and pony shows, doing marketing, if you will, and got out to a lot of people. And as a result of that, 800-and-some-odd people voted, which is probably about 30% higher than the average over the last 10 years. So, I think they did their best to get the message out. But I think that there are a number of people that didn't think that it was appropriate to be spending that type of money in this type of environment, especially with the new tax law. So, that's all obviously a consideration. You brought up the fact, Michelle, about budget neutral. And that's exactly what they're doing in Bronxville. One bond issue gets put to bed, the new one comes out, no one gets a tax increase. And I think that's what you're up against going forward. Lee, I guess the question I've got is, when you start putting out a 20-year bond where we went, we were 16 before, I'm even wondering now with a lower number, if you might be better off shortening that, so that you do have a capital plan put together, and every X amount of years, five years, 10 years, you put it together and as one bond gets retired, then the new one comes out and it becomes budget neutral. It makes it a lot easier for whoever's running the board or the school system at that time to make sure that all your capital improvements take place. And it kind of is a little bit of a hedge for the community on their taxes. So, just a thought. The only comment I have is, a question I have, is, what's being done for $500,000 for that field down there? Anybody can tell me what's included there? Because that seems like a lot of money to me.
It's a complete... I don't know all the details. I'm not a landscape architect. But Russ did take a look at it, and he has had his... Russ Davidson, our architect, and he has had his engineers who know how these things are typically done, take a look and evaluate that and do a preliminary cost estimate. But it needs to be completely dug down. It has poor drainage issues. It has all kinds of structural issues. And that's pretty much what they've estimated based on their years of experience is what it would cost for a field that size.
It just seems hard to me. But I thank you all for your efforts. I know it's a no-win situation many times, but I think you're doing the right thing, and I compliment you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael. I live on Stebbins Avenue. This is my first meeting and extremely informative. I'm new to the community, and I learned a lot of things. I didn't know
about art in the cart. I didn't know about music class in the locker room. So, that's actually very eye-opening. I have just one question with regards to strategy. So, there's a lot of talk about state money. By chopping this up and maybe having additional bonds down the road, are you... Is there any risk of leaving the state money on the table instead of have... Or is that not a concern?
Yeah, let me clarify that. The state... The reason that we are looking to get this fast-tracked by the state is because we can't start anything until the state gives us approval. And so, all the design plans have to be done to a much higher level. That takes several weeks. Then it goes up to the state and it goes in a queue with all the other projects around the state. We would always get the state aid regardless of which project we did and when. It's just a matter of if we want to have this one approved in time to start work a year from the summer, we need to get on that queue. And so, that's why the board is looking to do the project the way it is now. But whichever project we did, we would always be entitled to that state aid as long as the state doesn't change the way it determines the percentages.
That's the rest.
They haven't in... Past history is not a predictor of the future, but they haven't in a very long time. That's been pretty stable.
Anybody else?
Hi. Mike Gray, Tocco, Teacher Association President. I guess I'm here tonight, though, not in that capacity, but as a Cottle teacher. I don't think I need to go into too much detail. A lot has been said here already. When I started here in Tocco about 12 years ago now, I think the enrollment down at Cottle was a little over 500 in that neighborhood. And from what I understand now, I think we're over 600, 620. So, there's been a huge increase in the population down there in that time, which I think obviously is indicative of the great things that are happening down there and in the district. But obviously, as we've heard, brings with it a lot of negatives. Larger class sizes, they've been steadily growing since I've been there. The space that we've heard tonight that students are learning in and teachers are teaching in is not obviously what it should be. From storage closets to windowless rooms that, you know, you could barely fit two or three people in, you know, to classrooms. Mine, as an example, that are smaller than they should be for what we do as teachers now, which is a lot of, you know, small group work, differentiation. You know, we need to be doing different things in a classroom and the space, you know, now just doesn't allow for it. Again, I think a lot has already been said, you know, but the space is something that Cottle, you know, from the teacher's perspective, I think obviously, you know, there's not much disagreement there, is desperately needed. You know, with an approval in December or in April, you know, while of course, you know, as teachers, I would have been thrilled, you know, I still think about the time between now or whenever that vote is approved and, you know, construction starting, construction ending. You know, that's how difficult the situation is already, you know, at this point. So, again, you know, without a doubt, that space, you know, is a great concern to the teachers, just in terms of what we do every day and it'll allow us to do what we want to do, what we should be doing every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Good evening. Michael Denning, 72 Stebbins. Thank you to the board.
Thank you to the board. And one good thing that comes out of this is, we already have the design plan for what could be a second phase from KGND. So, we already have that, and we have cost analysis of what it's going to approximately cost. If, for argument's sake, we went with a second bond in September or October, would we be eligible for the, again, 23% state aid?
We would. Every project would get that same state aid calculation. We would just have to go in the queue. Six months later, it would be another timeframe.
Now, I know the original bond at $20 million, excuse me, on a 16-year, at about $600 was the number for the average home. Whereas, Michelle mentioned earlier, and we spoke about Ry Brook, they put up a $48 million bond, and that was costing the average homeowner $400, where this is going to cost us $6. So, you're like, okay, it's $200 difference. But their bond was to be paid off in four years. Ours was 16. So, we were $600 for 16 years, as opposed to $400 for four years. And there was twice as much money as ours. It makes it, they have more property to spread the money over. We have 1,216 single-family homes to spread over this $10 million. So, it's, there are commercial properties, multifamily. But when you look at Ry Brook, they have more commercial space. And for argument's sake, our village is one square mile, and they could be 20 square miles. So, they just have the vast area to spread that money over. So, it's a great district. We're small. It's really like a private school. It's great to have. It's just, we bear the cost of that as a smaller community. The other aspect is, with the addition of eight new classrooms, does that put us at eight new teachers? Which is now going to increase the overall budget for eight new salaries?
That does not.
It does not.
Yeah. Basically, the idea is gaining those eight new classrooms. We would move the largest classes into those spaces, and then reinstate the art room, an appropriate-sized music room. We certainly consider refurbishing the library. And the other thing is, I know the Cottle library is very rundown. And I think it's worth mentioning that we were holding off on doing anything because we were hopeful that a bond would get passed. Now that it's off the table, and we're doing a scaled-back bond, we will definitely do whatever we can within operating budget to upgrade that library, even if it just means lighting, paint, carpeting. But again, we're not adding eight new classes, eight new teachers. You know, staffing is enrollment-driven. So, the enrollment is here, no matter what. We don't have control over that. But the rooms will enable us to open up spaces, take a speech teacher out of a tiny closet, take an occupational therapist out of a storage closet, take an ENL classroom out of the gym locker room and reinstate the gym locker room. So, all those things would happen with the aid rooms, but not necessarily new staffing.
Not new staffing. And then, is the staffing here adjustable in the fact that we have an influx in Cottle? And that's going to shift to the high school, middle school? Is it, are those teachers, do they move up from moving, teaching, you know, grammar school to teach in high school? Are they, do they flex back and forth? You pull a teacher from here, put it down there, this year and next year?
We do have some shared staff. It depends on their certification.
Not shared staff. It's, we need 50 teachers there this year, and we need 30 here this year. Next year, we're going to need 35 here and 45 there.
Again, that's always a possibility, but that's enrollment-driven. So, yes, if, give an example. This past year, one of the largest grade levels in the building moved from fifth to sixth. So, currently, we have a very large sixth grade. There was a time in the past where we had three sections of sixth. Now, we have four. So, yes, when enroll, if a large class or enrollment shifts, and we have higher numbers in the middle high school, we will add staff. But it's always enrollment, not necessarily space.
I'm saying shifting staff, not adding staff.
Well, again, we would shift.
Because now, you have five third grade teachers, and the next year, you need four third-grade teachers. So, that third-grade teacher, will that now move to fourth? And for argument's sake, move up to middle school and high school?
Potentially, someone could move up. Let's say enrollment were to drop at Cottle in second grade. Yes, then we, you know, we don't just maintain the same number of sections. We will always, every year, we rethink it and reexamine it. So, it's possible, yes. But again, it all depends on what is happening with enrollment.
Right. But I'm saying, a Cottle teacher is going to be a Cottle teacher for their whole career? Or are they a Tocco School District teacher that may move?
Not necessarily.
Depends on certification. So, there are some teachers with cert that can teach anything from K to 12.
Right.
For the most part, though, an elementary teacher has elementary certification, and they only could serve in the elementary school.
So, the potential with the influx in the Cottle school now, moving to middle school and high school, are we going to have to hire more teachers here to accommodate when they move up?
Possibly, depending on the enrollment.
And I think helping with this bond is to have the new budget. I know it's tough, but to have it somewhat in line that, okay, your normal tax, school tax bill is going to go up X, and then the bond is also Y. So, your overall bill is going to be Z. If people had that idea of where the numbers would be, would be helpful to vote yes.
We do break it out that way. So, when we put together the budget, excuse me, there is a line separate for the debt and principal payments, as well as all our salary costs and everything else. It's broken out.
But I'm saying, for this bond vote coming up, if people had an idea.
Well, the budget will be ready in April, but.
I know that. But if they had an idea that we're going to stay within the cap, we think we can be within the cap. You were at 1.4, 1.2, down to 0.85, I think, going forward. But if people saw that their taxes were only going up 1%, and they can absorb the bond, I think you could sell the bond a little easier.
We will know closer to April. We adopt the budget in April.
Right. We'll be having budget presentations before then.
And we'll have budget hearing. We have budget workshops now until.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So, we have one more presentation, right, Lee, tonight? And that's on the fund balance.
Right. So, it's not a visual. It's just.
I'm just going to turn this off. Discussion.
A discussion.
Okay.
So, just to give you some history, as I mentioned before, the entire state, all the school districts in the state are under a tax cap environment. And that's the amount that a school district can raise your tax levy due to several inflation factors, as well as growth of buildings within the district. The state gives us a formula. We take a look at it. We determine what our maximum increase we can give to the tax levy. Last year, that was 0.8%. Over the last four years, as I said, it was averaging about 1%. This year, inflation, though, has picked up. It looks like we will be getting up to, over 2% CPI. So, the tax cap, just for the inflation factor, can go as high as 2%. We haven't even factored in yet our brick-and-mortar growth, if there is that, and we do believe there's some. So, we'll have to do a hard look at what we're entitled to do in terms of the tax levy and what our district's expenses will be. And that's what we're starting to do at this point in time. The majority of the district's revenue is the tax levy. It's about 83%. And it also includes, our other revenues include state aid. It also includes a small amount of county taxes and other things like that, and tuition from out-of-district students. And that really is what we use to pay all the expenses of the district. So, in order to be fiscally prudent and provide a balanced budget, which we're required to do by law next year, we have to look carefully at what growth there is in all our expenses, and take a look at what our revenues, all our revenues will look like, and come up with a balanced budget. So, that leads us to a discussion of the district's fund balance. The fund balance is our savings accounts, basically, that we're allowed to hold by state law. And there are a lot of restrictions on how we can set them up, how much we can fund them, how we're allowed to fund them. And we look carefully at the best ways to have a savings account for the district to keep the district solvent, and to make sure we can manage any fluctuations in our budgets year to year, as well as handle any emergencies that might arise. By law, we're allowed to keep 4% of our budget in our special unappropriated no-restriction fund balance savings account. And 4% of our budget right now is $1,003,000. So, our unrestricted, unappropriated savings account for emergencies is $1,003,000. And we use that if, for example, and we don't like to touch it for anything but emergencies, one-time things that we might have, that might come up. For example, if a boiler were to go in the middle of a school year, we would be able to use that so that we would be able to continue school quickly, and we wouldn't have to find a way to not be able to buy a new boiler. So, we always have to have that money available for emergencies. And year to year, how do we maintain our fund balances? How do they increase or decrease? It depends on how our district spends their budget from year to year. So, if our revenues exceed our expenses in a year, we'll run a surplus. And those monies can be channeled, if the board approves, to fund balances to provide us with savings for future years. Also, they can be returned to taxpayers. And we've done that in other years in terms of appropriating some of our surpluses to reduce our tax levies. And we can do that as well. So, our district treasurer, Faith Sparks, and I have been working on a preliminary fund balance projection for the year. And we still have five months to go, so it's early. But we are looking at, at this time, that our expenses are running lower slightly than what we budgeted. And we've cut off spending in January. So, we've asked teachers to stop their spending as of January so that we can determine what monies might be left. We feel at this point in the year, most of the supplies and equipment that are needed by the schools have been bought in the beginning of the school year, for a school year. Of course, we'll always spend for things that we need in emergencies, health supplies, graduation expenses, things like that. But the basic expenses, we feel, should have ended at this point in time. There's always an opportunity for exceptions, but that's where we are at this point. So, and we also try to project our revenues that are remaining for the school year to see if we're running within what we budgeted and how trends are going at that point in time. At this point in time, it looks like we will be able to offset the appropriation that we had for last year. We appropriated $969,000 to balance our budget for this year. Based on the fact that we've made savings throughout the year, we probably won't have to appropriate those monies. And we may have, and we've been tightening the budget over the last three or four years. So, each year, the surpluses that we're seeing are going down. There was a point in time where they were quite high, and they've been coming down over the years, and as they should be. We should try to be as close to our balanced budget as possible. So, we, last year, we had a surplus that we added to our tax certiary reserve. And this year, and we had quite a few tax certiaries last year. This year, our tax certiaries, so far as we see, are not running as high as last year. So, we won't be digging into our tax cert reserve this year. But they're still out there on the table. We have to be careful about what we have going forward. We have about $16 million in projected requested refunds from various organizations in the community. And our tax cert reserve right now is $3.9 million. And that covers about 24% of our projections. So, we feel, and that the state and our auditors agree, that that is an adequate amount to cover our tax certiaries. And again, as our budgets get tighter over the years, we'll have less monies to fund those tax certiary reserves. So, we want to try to keep them as funded as possible. Some years, we have quite high tax certiary reserves. So, we have to watch and see how that goes from year to year. We also set up last year a new reserve for ERS. That's our civil service employees' pension cost. And that is allowed by the state so that we can fund that tax, ERS reserve. And in years where the pension costs might go up quite high based on how the stock market does and other factors, we can smooth out those spikes in costs and expense using our reserves. And that will help the taxes maintain within the tax cap. So, in addition, the district continues to follow the recommendations that we receive from the New York State Controller and our auditors. We maintain and utilize an appropriate tax cert reserve. This reserve is used to pay ongoing our tax certiary judgments. And as we said before, avoiding having to take on new debt to pay those. And if there are any additional surplus funds remaining at the end of this year, we'll discuss that with the Finance Budget Committee over the next couple of months. We'll bring those recommendations to the board, and also speak with our auditors, and decide if there were surpluses, how we might use those. But at this point in time, it does not look like our reserves will in any way decrease from year to year, and the district continues to have a healthy reserve. Are there any questions?
Any questions with that?
Lee, I just want to say thank you for getting this conversation started. Although Ms. Liu did not have visuals this evening, as she said, it's early in the process. But over the next two to three months, you will get a lot more detailed information about our budget development. We will have information, and everything is always posted on the website. So, it's great to see such a large audience. And we encourage you to stay with us all the way through, you know, the bond process, as well as the budget process, which goes through May. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. Please stay tuned. Next week, we will meet next Monday for a regular scheduled meeting. And we do intend to put up a proposal for the capital project next Monday. So, thank you again, and good evening.